Good evening and welcome to the April meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board. We thank you for being here in attendance, to our board, to those that are joining us here in the room, and also those by TV. So, at this time, I do call this meeting to order, and I'll ask Ms. Tab if she will to call the roll.
Fred Austin.
Present.
Don Brown.
Present.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Molly Holdeman.
Present.
Thompson Forbes.
Present.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
RJ Henby. John Landrin. Steve Little.
Here.
Charles McGovern.
Present.
Thank you, members. As we continue, I'm going to ask at this time that we do stand as Mr. Don Brown leads us in prayer, followed by the place of allegiance, led by Mr. Thompson Forbes.
To heaven most graceful, Father, as we bow down this afternoon, Lord, to take care of the business of the planning board, we ask you the blessings and give us strength and guidance where we make the best decision in governing this board. In Jesus' name we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of our March 15 meeting.
So moved.
A motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising of the right hand. All opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Mr. Rhodes, if you would, I'm sorry, before I go there, let me just ask if seeing none had have signed up, but are there any public addresses to the board at this time? Seeing none, the public address to the board is clear. Now, Mr. Rhodes, I'll come to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We're glad to have a full complement tonight because we have our final vacant seat filled. Ms. Molly Holdeman has joined us for the first time tonight, so she's going to be representing District Six, that's District Four and Six, I mean, Four and Five, for the Commissioners' Voters Districts. So with that, Tab is here tonight to formally swear you in if you'd like to approach here, and I'll go back and take my seat, and you can conduct that business and move forward after that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Molly Holdeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Therewith.
Therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the planning board.
As a member of the planning board.
Molly, it's nice to have you on our board, and we just trust that as we all move forward, that we'll do great things for Pitt County, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you.
And at the same time, I would like to welcome Mr. RJ.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Mr. Gooby.
Yes, sir.
Always good to see you, sir. You bring us news each time.
Likewise, sir, thank you. We do have two rezoning requests for you tonight. The first one is from Environmental Resource Management. This is to rezone a little over six acres on parcel number 22676. It's located on NC 102 East. Property is owned by Piedmont Natural Gas. This is west of its intersection with Leary Mills Road, and the request is to go from rural agricultural to light industrial conditional district, and that's to allow the operation of an energy reliability center, which will house natural gas compression, uh, natural gas pressurization equipment. I see the site here, this is on NC 102 East, between NC 43, as you're heading towards Beaufort County. It's apparently rural areas, you see, this is the site itself, this, it's completely wooded now. This is looking to the west, if you're heading back towards 43, and then to the east, is if you're heading towards the Beaufort County line. There are a few adjacent residences. This one is located to the east of the site. These two are to the west as well. Then to the west is also an agricultural operation. Again, it's a, it's a pretty rural area, so this is a farming operation out there. Land use plan designates the site as rural residential agricultural. It's intended to include low-density residential uses, agriculture, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. That type of criteria would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. Also, we, we looked at it from the new county's land use plan, the envisioned Pitt County 2045, that was just approved last month by the Board of County Commissioners. The plan is not effective yet, it becomes effective on May 1st. That plan does designate the property as agricultural. That includes prime farmlands that are vital to agricultural production, include agriculture, forestry, and limited low-density residential and commercial or institutional uses. The existing land uses, you see, like I said, it's a fairly rural area, there are some scattered residential uses along the highway, but primarily it's going to be wooded and farmland. Zoning shows that the entire area is rural agricultural. The intended district, light industrial, is intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, warehousing, wholesale, and related commercial support uses that have little or no adverse impact upon surrounding properties. It's intended for areas that have access to major thoroughfares and utilities to support this type of development. Again, this is a conditional zoning district, so allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure compatibility with the neighboring properties, and that use again is an energy reliability center and natural gas compression, pressurization equipment. Under our ordinance, it's classified as a utility service facility with no outside storage. This is a view of the site plan itself that was submitted. This is the property line, and they've requested just a little over six acres, which is shown here in yellow. Blown-up view, again, you see the rezoning area. There are some proposed structures, including a control building, a storage building, and the pressurization equipment structure. There's also an electrical substation that's proposed, and then they'll have a system of drives and parking, as well as some fencing around these facilities that's shown in yellow. There's also a temporary construction laydown area that will be cleared up after construction is completed. So that's not really part of the rezoning request, but it is an area that we'll be utilizing during the facility's construction. Staff finds that the request is consistent with both the county's comprehensive land use plan and envisioned Pitt County 2045. The site is located on a major thoroughfare, NC 102 East, and it's designated as rural residential agricultural in the, in the land use plan and agricultural in envisioned Pitt County 2045. Both of those categories do allow limited commercial and institutional land uses, and that proposed light industrial zoning district does accommodate limited commercial and industrial uses that have little or no adverse impact on surrounding properties. Staff also finds the request is reasonable in the public interest. Again, it is a conditional zoning district, so it's a very specific use, and that use is for a public utility. Facility is intended to strengthen the natural gas delivery system within the county and to ensure the system's reliability. Also, the site will be located approximately 1,000 feet from the nearest residence, and they'll be utilizing existing vegetation for the screening, and will not generate a significant amount of traffic or noise, and therefore should have fairly minimal impacts on the surrounding property. So staff does recommend approval, and we do have some additional conditions that we're also recommending tonight. The first is the proposed temporary laydown area should be cleared of all equipment and materials once construction is completed. They'll need to provide a noise study that indicates projected noise generated by the facility to ensure that it won't interfere with the surrounding residences. They're going to provide a post-construction noise survey of the facility to confirm continued compliance with the noise ordinance. No zoning compliance permit will be issued until a full site plan is prepared and submitted to our office for approval. To the maximum extent possible, they should utilize all the existing vegetation that's there in order to screen the facility from the adjoining properties. If it can't be utilized, they'll need to provide a 10-foot buffer yard, it's planned in accordance with the zoning ordinance requirements. They'll also need to provide a landscaping plan with that site plan showing all that. Any required parking spaces, access drives, and loading areas should be paved. They also, they will need to submit a soil erosion and sedimentation control plan to the state. Because it's a public utility, the county doesn't have jurisdiction over it like we would for most other developments, so they would have to submit that to NC DEQ. The site plan, the site must also comply with the stormwater ordinance, and will also need to comply with any emergency management requirements for fire protection. They'll also have to provide or obtain any required permits from inspections to occupy the structures, as well as comply with any applicable environmental health requirements for wastewater disposal. And then they'll also have to obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with all their requirements for access. So this time we'd like to entertain public comments, and the Board of Commissioners are scheduled to hold a public hearing on May 15.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open our meeting for public comments, and, sir, at this time, I do open up for public comments. I don't see that we have anyone signed up to speak, but I do understand that there may be...
We do have some representatives that are here on behalf of the applicant.
Some representatives that would like to present a presentation, right?
Yes, sir, I'm going to pull theirs up real quick if you want.
As your spokesman, spokesperson comes up, please give us your name and address, and as normal, we're looking at a three-minute time limit, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, good evening. My name's Megan Canavan. I'm a consultant with Environmental Resource Management. My address for the record is 300 West Summit Avenue, Suite 330 in Charlotte, North Carolina. With me this evening, I have our project team, I have Tom Morris with Piedmont Natural Gas, who will also be coming up here and just, we're sharing our three minutes, to present, and Justin Burdette, our project engineer, who's available for questions, as well as Kirk Ledu from Perscheron. So thank you for that. So, there we go. So I know that Eric did go over this plan here, but this is what the site plan looks like. It's a, the total parcel is a little over 114 acres of land. There shaded in the pink is the area that we are requesting the conditional rezoning, and then there in the blue is the temporary laydown area. You can see where the wetlands are avoided. From the road in C 102 to the project area, there's about a 280-foot setback. So a lot of, a lot of buffering to, you know, minimize any visual impacts from the, the road there or nearby landowners as well. In total, there's only about 5% of the total footprint of the 114 acres that will be used actually for the project. The rest of the area will be used and maintained in a natural state. And this is just a, a little bit more of an up-close look at that. And with that, I'm going to have Tom come up and just talk a little bit about the actual use and why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good evening. Tom Morris, Piedmont Road Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina, Project Manager for Piedmont Natural Gas. So this facility is going to have some pressurization equipment in it for our reliability of the system in eastern North Carolina, eastern Pitt County, and provide natural gas up and down our corridors. You can see this, this picture here, our red, our red pipelines run through the county and then run north and south along the eastern side of the county. We're going to have a small-scale, industrial, electric-driven, zero-emission, natural gas pressurization equipment in, in the building. This is a facility that we have in, in South Carolina, the same, same setup. We'll need to build it to provide additional capacity and reliability for our gas system in our, in eastern North Carolina. Natural gas flows through infrastructure factors such as pipeline configuration, as well as customer dan, demand can reduce the pressure of natural gas, and this helps us boost demand, or boost our capacity up for the system. This is an example, this whole cartoon we put together showing what the, the facilities look like. We do have a... Is that three minutes?
Thank you.
Oh.
You go ahead.
Sorry. Stand up. This is a, we have incoming delivery point here where we, income power, our pressurization equipment building that has the generation equipment in it. We do have some existing infrastructure, the purple lines that we will tie into, that's along that, that highway, 102. We'll receive gas from there, we'll filter, filter it, run it through the compression facility, uh, equipment, and then cool it before we put it back into the system. We do have some additional buildings, control room, other, other buildings that we, we store equipment in for supporting this facility. From safety perspective, Piedmont Natural Gas, we do supply the Greenville area with, with natural gas to your city gates. We do propose this site to be outside of wetlands, out of public view, to minimize any potential visual impacts or environmental, environmental impacts, and we do have safety mechanisms in place to support this infrastructure. We, again, we have four natural gas compression units in our territories, we, we support those on a, on a daily, on a daily basis. From a noise level, we've done noise studies on the existing infrastructure we have that runs electric generation. Those are about 55 DBA at the property line. We probably see the same, we will see the same noise for these facilities too. We'll do, we've done a pre-construction noise survey, we'll do a post-construction noise survey too, and we'll use noise, noise blankets and, and buildings to eliminate any noise that we may have on the site. So there's a example of the DBA, 55 DBA is an average talking room, room noise. Economic impact, yeah, we're going to build the facility here in Pitt County, that's going to help drive economic development in your area, provide natural gas, reliable natural gas to the area, area, help, you know, the local hospitals, educational services, and other real estate development that would happen in the county, and then we'll contribute to Pitt County's annual GDP relying on this, this gas for you, for your system. Questions?
Any questions for members of the board at this point? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question. Sorry. The, the noise level, is this a constant hum?
When it's operating, yes.
Does it operate 24/7?
It will operate on demand.
On demand, okay.
So we have cyclical periods where we would operate during customer demand, demand growth. We don't run our other facilities on a 24-hour-a-day basis. And again, it's, as you can see, I'm not sure, Eric, you want to pull up the map of the area of, I think it's your map that you had that showed the homeowners. Yeah, so the, the, the two parcels, I don't know if they can see it, or anything. The two, the two parcels over here, there's one home in this parcel. That's prob, that's the closest home, and that's over 1,500 feet or so from the, from the facility site outside of our, outside of our property boundary. So we should not, the community should not hear any noises from this facility. Between that and keeping the trees, we're not going to, this is the whole 112-acre, 112-plus acre site, we're not removing any of these other trees that are, that are growing on here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Any other questions, or, okay?
Okay.
I would mention to your team that, I noticed in your application that you did give us information, talking about safety, environmental indoors, just like you did in your presentation, and I appreciate that. Eric, are you going to mention?
Yes, sir, that's what I was just getting ready to mention. In front of you have also, we did receive one letter from a neighboring property owner, and I'll go back and show you which house they live in. It's from a Sammy and Gloria wall, and they have concerns. They had some, they had three questions about the public sa, they want to know what public and safety concerns there were, what environmental concerns there were, and why they need, it says, they stated that there's already a substation for, for Piedmont Natural Gas, over, over a mile away on Leary Mills Road, and questioning why they needed another one. And then just had some questions about the, the habitat and maintaining the trees for habitat. But if you look on the map here, this site here, if you can see the arrow, that, that's the home where they live in. So they're the second, farthest or second closest, depending on how you want to look at it, to the site.
Okay.
But I don't believe, I don't believe they're here tonight though, sir.
And as to my knowledge, the speakers have spoken, they came to speak to this subject right now, right? All right. Any questions from the board? Because at this time, I'm going to ask, I'll let you know, the Chair will entertain a motion from the board for us to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation and approve this rezoning.
Second, Don Brown. I have a motion and a second, that we grant approval, conditional approval, and when I say conditional approval, I wish, just, I had a comment that as I've noticed as we went through, it looks like staff has done a good job of making sure that we're trying to answer any questions going forward, and folks, there's some conditions there that you see, and that we'll be looking forward to meeting that need as we go forward. Any other comments from the board, any questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising of the right hand? All opposed, like sign? The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Eric. Ben, I believe you're...
We do have one other rezoning request this evening. It's a request submitted by Susan Martin. The request is to rezone 3.71 acres of property. This parcel number 02618. It is owned by Donald A. Spate, Alicia Spate-Hulk, and Matthew P. Hawk, and this is located on the southwestern side of Alexander Brown Road, and just south of this intersection with NC 11 North, and the request is to rezone from rural agricultural to general commercial conditional district for the operation of a park-and-ride airport shuttle service. The site location, you see, again, it's just right off of NC 11 North, between the town of Bethel and the city of Greenville. Some site location pictures, this is the site, looking at it from NC 11. This is NC 11 North, looking back south towards Greenville, and back toward the north, towards Bethel. There are some adjacent residential uses directly across the highway from the site. This is a picture of the site from Alexander Brown Road. This is Alexander Brown Road, heading towards, heading south, and then heading north back towards the NC 11 intersection. There's a couple of the residences directly across the street from Alexander Brown Road, and some of the agricultural uses, this is the parcel directly to the north of the site. The 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan does designate this site as rural residential and agricultural, and this designation is intended to include low-density residential, single-family site-built and manufactured homes, agricultural, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public institutional uses meeting locational criteria. That locational criteria for non-residential uses within this land use category includes frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development, and land uses within this category would be expected to develop on septic systems. As Eric mentioned for the last rezoning, we did look at the envisioned Pitt County 2045 plan, even though it is effective May 1st, just to kind of look at it with the recommendation in the future land use map. The map does designate this area as agricultural, and that designation does include prime farmlands that are vital to agricultural production within the county, and activities include agriculture, forestry, and limited low-density residential and commercial or institutional uses. These are mainly areas near strategic agricultural lands and surrounding areas, and some of the uses in this category would be agriculture, agribusiness, forestry, limited commercial, single-family properties, and occasional low-density, small-scale residential subdivisions, again, septic system and community water, and the density is generally less than one billion unit per acre. The existing land uses in the area, you do see those residential uses along Alexander Brown Road, as well as a couple directly across the highway. There are two industrial uses across NC 11, those are two separate salvage yards. And the current zoning in the area is all rural agricultural, except for one of the salvage yards across NC 11. The other was existing prior to the development or the adoption of the zoning ordinance, so you see that's still RA, but the other in light gray is the other salvage yard. The proposed zoning district, general commercial, is a primary, primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the, and the necessary utilities to support such development. And a conditional zoning district is for a specific use, and again, this is for a park-and-ride airport, airport shuttle. The use is specifically from the zoning ordinance that this is kind of categorized under is automobile parking, commercial, and bus terminal. We did receive a sketch plan for the proposed use. This is the full outline of the subject property, and this is the area they specifically kind of lined out for rezoning proposal this evening. There's a proposed structure on the site, and you see the proposed Phase 1 parking in the driveway in gray, and then the Phase 2 parking. Did want to make one note here, DOT did review this plan, and they are not allowing access off of NC 11, and that is why the access is shown off of Alexander Brown Road with the driveway going into the site. Planning staff did meet with the applicant and her engineer and kind of suggested that this be oriented as much as possible towards NC 11 North to kind of create some of that spatial distance from existing residential uses. They're also showing Phase 2 parking here, and that would be developed if and when there was a need for it based on the success of the business. There's also some highway corridor overlay buffers there that will have to have some screening. They are proposing additional screening, again, to help some of the residences along Alexander Brown Road to have some additional screening, and they have reserved some agricultural area there, again, to kind of provide a buffer to the site from Alexander Brown Road. Staff does find that this request is consistent with the 2030 comp plan, as well as envisioned Pitt County 2045. The area requested for rezoning is designated as rural residential, agriculture, and agricultural on the future land use maps in both of these plans, and the uses in this area are a mixture of residential, agricultural, and industrial. Additionally, the site has frontage on a major state highway, NC 11 North. Staff does find this request as reasonable and in the public interest because of the site's proximity to existing non-residential land uses, and these are those two salvage yards directly across the street, West Auto Sales &amp; Salvage, as well as Wallace Incorporated. And there are also general commercial zone properties within close proximity to the site along NC 11 North, and that's the Country Mart, as well as G Palace Sweepstakes to the south of the site. And additionally, the proposed use will be oriented along the side fronting NC 11 North in order to provide separation from existing residences along Alexander Brown Road. And staff does recommend approval with the following additional conditions. So no zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan is prepared in accordance with the Penance B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County planning for review and approval. A landscaping plan is required, and the property shall be screened from any adjacent residential use and public road right-of-way by a 10-foot wide landscape buffer yard planted in accordance with the requirements of Section 10-8 of the zoning ordinance, and a soil erosion and sedimentation control plan approved by an engineer shall be submitted for development for this property that results in land disturbance over one acre. The site must comply with the Pitt County stormwater ordinance for nutrient control. Nutrient loading and peak flow calculations shall be reviewed and approved prior to any improvements involving more than one-half acre. They must require or obtain all permits from Pitt County inspections and environmental health, and obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT to comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. Planning board now entertain public comments, and just like the other rezoning, the Board of Commissioners is scheduled to hold a public hearing at their May 15 meeting.
Good deal. Thank you, Ben. At this time, we will... At this time, we will open our meeting up for public comments, and I do have one person signed up to speak on this issue, Mr. Ricky Hines.
Good evening. How y'all doing? My name is Ricky Hines. I reside at 2452 Surry Lane in Winterville, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of Marvin Howard, that owns partials there on Alexander Brown Road, 173 and 277 on Alexander Brown Road. Basically, he couldn't be here because he's under the weather, so he asked me to come. And basically, from what I'm seeing here, our main concern is lighting, and then the character of the area. The area is already condensed with housing already there, and you've brought in a structure like this there. We have the salvage yards across the street already, and it's kind of out of character, or wouldn't you say? I don't know, but yeah, I'm all for, you know, moving forward, but it's kind of a little bit unusual, a park-and-ride that far out. And then also, too, what would be the hours? They saying they're gonna be going back and forth, shuttling to RDU or whatever, so that means that it's gonna be in and out, in and out traffic there, and pretty much the lighting on that side of town for the people on Alexander Brown Road. So those are just all concerns.
Any questions for Mr. Hines from the board? Okay. Thank you, sir. Having no other speakers signed up, I will close our session. I'm sorry?
I live there, Rick. Do I need to do this?
Yes, sir. You want to address this particular issue, right?
Yes.
Okay. Need you to state your name and your address.
My name is Clifton Carney, and I'm at 229 Alexander Brown Road. And I live directly across the street from this property. In fact, it showed my house on this property. But my concern is traffic, and lighting, and noise. It would probably impact me more so than anyone else on that road, because I'm directly across the street from it. I came here just to get some information, because I don't have all the information of what's gonna take place. But I'm concerned about the traffic and lighting, and are they gonna be operating 24/7 with buses coming in and out of that area? So I kind of need more information of what the plans are, so that I can inform the people in the community as what is about to take place in our community. So I would like to have some hands out, or whatever you have available, that I can hand carry back and share it with some of my neighbors. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? For me?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carney. So at this time, as we consider this particular item on the agenda, and I think to Mr. Carney's point, there are some questions that he's asked, I believe, and some of the information that we might have received. We do have some of those answers already, so.
Yes, sir. In your agenda packet, you should have received a kind of a business narrative that was submitted by Ms. Martin with the application. As far as the number of trips, what they're proposing to start is two trips leaving the site, the first bus leaving at 4:00 a.m. and returning at 10:00 a.m. from RDU, so leaving at 4:00, and then the... And then I believe she has the second bus leaving at 11:00 a.m., and then a third bus will be added as demand, you know, kind of dictates. And Ms. Martin is not here this evening, so ideally she could have answered some of these specifics a little bit better than I can with the actual, you know, traffic input that they're kind of expecting. As far as the lighting, they will be required, as with anything, to kind of have a lighting plan that shows lighting, staying on-site and not leaving the site. And that's just as far as lighting, that doesn't really count for headlights going up and down the driveway, that may be some concern for adjacent property owners, so any on-site lighting will have to stay on-site, not leave it for the zoning ordinance requirements.
Good deal. At the same time, I do believe as we look at the conditions that are being required all the way through, that needs to be paid attention to, but even that's gonna happen after whatever we decide here, as it goes to the county commissioners, it'll be coming out of that meeting to make sure it moves forward. Thank you, sir. Any concerns or questions from the planning board?
Our only concerns, Chairman, is the, it's basically to take people to Raleigh. What impact would that do on Pitt Greenville? I know they'll have a flight there to Raleigh, but you know, a few years down the road, then some carrier might come in and decide to do the Raleigh trip. What does that leave?
You mean as far as the shuttle service?
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be, but I would suspect that, I'm just guessing, this particular owner at that particular time has got to say what she's gonna have to do.
That's correct.
To meet competition.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Ms. Martin, but I know she has kind of done a study for what she feels is a need for our community. You know, staff hasn't done that study or kind of been able to verify that, obviously, but you know, she has done some research on that, and kind of based on that and the timing for what she feels is the most, the best time for these buses to leave to get to RDU for a certain time for a hot seat, flight hours. But again, I think that brings up a good point, you know, but certainly something I can predict.
And to Mr. Hardy's comment, and to Mr. Hines' question earlier, I mean, it is, some of us may think a little far out, but then evidently she's looked at her business plan and is feeling good about what she's trying to do, okay? Again, it's up to us, if we see that it meets the criteria, we can make those views known now, but in the meantime, the chair will entertain a motion.
I got a question. Ben?
Yes, sir.
What? How would the headlights be directed from the bus or the vehicle? I mean, because this, the bus leaves at 4:00 in the morning, for example, and I'm concerned, you know, about the, about putting the lights up in the air in the middle of the country and having the lights coming onto the track and disturbing this gentleman's use of his own land.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, it's, it's not compelling that we, that we make this a general commercial use. I mean, we're not compelled to do that. We can decide that in our own opinion as a planning board. But what I'm saying is, I'm concerned about headlights and lights on the site. I don't know if any other members are or not, but I'm concerned about somebody enjoying his property, because this is not, it's not already general commercial, but it will, it will be subject to the conditions when we, if we make it general commercial. I'm just asking what our colleagues on the board think about that. I mean, is that concerning to anybody?
And I will say, we had that conversation with the engineer, Mr. Spruill, and kind of, Pio can pull up the map real fast. You kind of see the driveway, they've positioned it, you can't see where the houses are, kind of on the bottom half of that map, but they kind of positioned the driveway in the best way they could, taking that into account between two houses. Not sure if our pictures show very well. So I think if you see this property line here, I believe they're trying to position that driveway such that it would go kind of onto that property line. Not to say there won't be any flood, any lighting onto either property line, but that was a consideration when they were designing that, and don't want to say it would eliminate all of it, but that was a concern we had as well. So they kind of repositioned it such that the driveway would at least be lined up between two residences, so that would try to limit that effect of the lighting to, to your point, we had a similar thought, and that was the engineer's solution for that, just to attempt to, you know, kind of handle that.
But these other, these other rectangles are all houses across the road, right?
Yes, sir. So the orange are all residences, as you see here, is one, I think about right here. So I think their idea is that the driveway would be kind of directly along this property line.
Good.
When it's coming out, again, I'm not gonna say that would eliminate all lighting, but they did consider that when they were designing that, to try to limit it as much as possible.
Okay.
I have a question.
But the, these are also, I mean, a 38-passenger bus, I don't know what kind of decibel that emits. Do you know? I mean...
I do not.
Ms. Oldham?
Do the other, the salvage yards that are industrial use have nighttime lighting? I mean, I imagine that in a parking lot where they're gonna want people to be safe, there's gonna be lights on all the time.
I would assume so, yes, ma'am. If they're not proposing any fencing as the, on the sketch plan, so for any cars that are left out there while they're traveling, I would assume, I know Ms. Martin did say they were gonna have security, but I would assume, we haven't got the full site plan when we would look at the lighting, but I would assume it's gonna be well-lit. As far as the salvage yards, I don't know. Do you know, Eric, offhand?
And while he's looking, do you know where the salvage yard and other commercial uses are in relation to this lot?
Yes, sir. I can show you that. As Ben said, the salvage yards are located on the other side of NC 11. This is the West salvage here, and then there's Lewis Wallace salvage here. I don't, West salvage actually predated the zoning ordinance, so it's a, it's a non-conforming use, so they weren't subject to any of our current lighting standards. I don't know what their lighting is now. And most of these, though, the salvage areas are back far off the road, and you can't really see them from the highway. I know with Mr. Wallace is here, there's a pretty thick tree line between them, and I don't, I don't think he's got any lighting back there, to be honest with you.
I got you.
But you can't see any of that, because it's so far off the road.
I got you.
Well, my point about that would be, if there was already ambient lighting caused by some other use, then the lighting is already there before this.
One more point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Did you say that there, and I've looked, because I just thought about it, there's nothing in here about fencing, right? Or security?
No, that was one of the questions we had. You know, certainly the ordinance wouldn't require that, but they're not showing any on the sketch plan we received. They said their means of dealing with security are just cameras and, I assume, lighting out there. But of course, if you're having vehicles, if they're going on a two-week vacation and sitting out there, I would think that was a concern for security, but again, nothing that the ordinance specifically requires.
Mr. Davenport?
Did the applicant, did they submit any kind of numbers or survey? I mean, I'm sure they think this is, I mean, if they're going through this, I'm sure they are pretty sure that they've got enough customers for this. They didn't give any kind of, we don't know if there's gonna be 38 people two times a day that are gonna be pulling in and out of there.
Nothing. I will say that Ms. Martin's confident that there is a need for it, but nothing that was provided to us that, not that we would necessarily look at that through the zoning process, but to your point of the actual need, we didn't receive those numbers, you know, that the business narrative is what she provided, kind of showing what her plan is, but not necessarily any numbers to document the actual need.
Mr. Chairman, my question is timing also, because if you're leaving at 4:00, that means that noise is gonna start about 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning every day, you know? And so, wow, I can imagine trying to get some sleep, and car doors are slamming, and it's gonna be more than 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, because you got a bus load. And I think that's, that's really unfair to the residents to have to hear that kind of noise at 1:00 to 2:00, because you're gonna be looking out, because if you hear car doors slamming, you're gonna get up, and that's gonna disturb, I think, the neighbors.
Any other comments? And what I've heard are all great comments and great, great concerns. So we need to look back, too, and realize, too, that if we look at the staff review and recommendations, that this request is consistent with our 2030 Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use and Envision Pitt County 2045 Comprehensive Land Use. So something to be considered there. Yes, sir?
Like I, like I said earlier, I'm at 229 Alexander Brown Road, and my property road frontage is more than the road frontage of this project. I also have my house on it, because you can, if you show my house again, if you can, I have my house on it, and I also have three mobile homes on it. So it's gonna affect me more, like I said, more than anyone else, because of my, my road frontage and their road frontage is a little less than mine. I don't want anyone, anyone driving a bus in front of my house 2:00 in the morning and shining a light in my bedroom, or waking me up in the morning with the noise. So I have a problem with this. Most of the neighbors couldn't, neighbors couldn't be here, but they expect me to come back with some information from them, for them. I'm concerned about the noise, I'm concerned about the lighting, I'm concerned about the, once the, once the buses are not, they're not utilizing, what's gonna happen to the property at night? Are there gonna be some people going out there, parking? That doesn't, not associate with, with, with the transit system? What's gonna happen to all the land? The portion that's not being used for parking lot? What's gonna happen to it? Is it gonna be maintained? Is it gonna be farmland? There's a lot of questions I have that I don't have to answer for. Okay? Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Carney. All right. You've heard comments? Any other comments from any of the board members or questions?
I do have one more question. Was the proposed layout that you show with the driveway and parking lot, was that provided to the homeowners that are within a certain distance?
No, ma'am. So we just included with the notice, just a general location map that kind of shows the area that's proposed for rezoning.
Good question.
And there again, with the questions that are being asked, they can continue to ask that, but at this point, the chair will entertain a motion as to what your pleasure is on this item on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With our land use program and what the staff has done, I hope that we approved the staff's recommendation. As far as noise level, I live on Porter Town Road. It's a minimum of 700 cars a day, and it does not bother us. I just don't think at those different hours of night that it's not gonna, you know, upset anybody.
Okay. I do have a motion that we approve this recommendation. Can I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of this request. All in favor of that? Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of this motion, let it be known by raising your right hand? All opposed, like sign?
Ms. Naomi, are you for it or against it? You voted, you voted both times. You voted for it? Okay. So then that means it's five-four? No, no, you're right.
Five-five.
Five-five?
That's what I counted off.
Not Kim, Ms. Naomi, on either? She voted twice.
Four.
Four, okay. So five-five.
What was it?
Five-to-five.
Okay. That's interesting. All right. Sir?
If it's five-five, the motion does not carry, and I'm gonna motion we deny it.
Okay. Second?
Yeah, Mr. Henry.
Okay. And may I have a motion before that the request be denied? All in favor of that motion to deny? Please let it be known by raising your right hand.
Five.
All opposed? I don't get to use him that much more, so I'm sure going to have his wisdom at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just conferring with James real quickly, nothing in the rules address what just happened, a split vote, I mean, neither motion carried. I would simply recommend that James carry that split vote on both matters to the Board of Commissioners, they'll be notified of it. Essentially, there's no recommendation of this board, one way or the other. Given the rules that don't address, I think that's the best-case scenario.
Thank you, sir. Board, you've heard it, and that being said, that's what we shall do.
Mr. Chairman, one question. Just for information. So now what happens is, the applicant is now can, I'm not applicant, the residents can request more information from staff and prepare themselves for the May 15 meeting with the county commissioners and be better prepared, right?
So said and so done.
I'll get your contact information, sir. Now I can make copies. I'll get your information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's your question. I just.
So, in other words.
You need to come back into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. So in other words, we can come back to the county commissioners' meeting and talk about how we feel about it again, and they will make a decision from there, they're running a decision from there.
Correct.
I'm just trying to make sure. Absolutely. So I can explain it.
Yeah, absolutely, and just as, so if this matter, if the, if the planning board recommended denial, it would have went to the governing board anyways.
Yep.
If the planning board recommended approval, it would have went to the governing board anyways. It's still going to the governing board with essentially no formal recognition, recommendation one way or the other. So yes, all members of the public are welcome to attend. Staff, what meeting will that be?
May 15.
May 15.
May 15. All right. So just sign up like we did tonight and be able to talk to.
I think you have to sign up in advance with the county manager's office.
So when is the sign up in advance? Because we want to make sure that.
Next is five, two days of any questions.
That's why I just want to make sure.
I got this.
Right.
I know Ricky knows, because he's been, he's been chairman since.
I just want to make sure.
So, remember, this is why we have the last slide up here, the opportunity remains for public comments. It will be a public hearing, a formal public hearing. Additional notices will go out to all those citizens involved. There'll be public ads in the paper, so people can walk in the door, just like they did tonight, sign up at the front door and have their time to speak, three minutes at the commissioners' meeting as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And again, notices will go out, just like before, where we have our contact information, people can contact us for this additional information, we're open to meet with anyone as well. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Ben.
All right, thank you all.
Jason?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up tonight for development review, we have Dixon Grove preliminary plan. This is located on Dixon Road, south of its intersection with Black Jack Rhymes and Road in the Grimes and Township. It consists of 35 lots, 47.23 acres, the owner is Sutton Land Holdings LLC. This is an overall view, you can see Salton Grimes and ZTJ there and Simpson as well. A little further zoomed in at the site here, Dixon Road and Black Jack Rhymes and Road. This is an overall view of the plan, and a few notes on the plan. This is phase one of the intersection, these will be road front lots. There are two new public streets proposed. Mailbox turnout unit is located near the cul-de-sac. There is a riparian buffer running through this area, also a Pitt County drainage lateral, and with that, open space will run along that drainage lateral. And this site is currently zoned RA, which is a 30,000 square foot minimum. The plan shows 21% of the area dedicated to open space, allowing for a 21%, 20% reduction in lot size resulting in a 24,000 square foot minimum lot size and a 25-foot minimum setback. Two new streets are proposed, electricity is by the Greenwood Utilities Commission and water is provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. School districts are Chicago K-8 and Deech Conley High School. Conditions and requirements on this plan, an NCDOT-approved mailbox unit with shelter and lighting is required. Proposed road name, Park Lane Way, must be renamed, landscape buffers required along all state-maintained roads. This project will require buffer crossing paperwork from BEQ and the Sewer Erosion Sedentation Control Plan. This development will require the installation of best management practices, and/or payment must be approved and paid to a private mitigation bank or an environmental enhancement program. Pitt County Emergency Management, all lots must be within 400 foot of a fire hydrant. Roads must meet the requirements for fire service apparatus. Pitt County Environmental Health, all lots must meet environmental health requirements. NCDOT will require non-access even along the lots three on the Dixon side, lots four, 27, 28, and 35, 425 foot from the intersection on Lot Three heading west. NCDOT will require 25 by 25 right-of-way at the intersection, a park lane way and Dixon Road lane, where they'll intersect state route 1782 Dixon Road. NCDOT will also require 70 by 10 site triangle at each intersection, and request the mailbox be labeled in the plan. Greenwood Utilities will require electrical easements and provide details. This is the current condition of the site, currently in agricultural production. Again, current site conditions, you can see one adjacent property there. The adjacent properties across the street along Black Jack Rhymes and Road. This is a view of the intersection there, and also adjacent property owners facing west, the intersection of Dixon Road and Black Jack Rhymes and Road. Adjacent property owners have been notified, and staff has received no inquiries regarding this proposed development. Again, no calls or requests to review these plans.
Did you say received inquiries and received no?
We did not. That was not necessarily specified there in that first paragraph, but we didn't receive any calls or requests. Technical Review Committee has recommended conditional approval. At this time, are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board? Jason.
Were there any public addresses to the board?
I had no one signed up, in fact, let me open it up for public comments, but I had no one signed up, and I don't believe anyone sitting here is coming forth to speak. So it closes that portion of our meeting as far as public hearings on Dixon Grove. So any comments or questions from the board? At this point, I'll entertain a motion from this board for conditional approval.
I make a motion, we accept the staff's recommendation to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Hardy. Can I have a second?
Second, Hembry.
Second from Mr. Hembry. Thank you, gentlemen. At this point, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, like sign? The motion carries. I believe we're going to talk about Dakota Creek, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dakota Creek, Section 3. It's a preliminary plan, Section 2 was previously approved and is constructed. This is located on Dakota Creek Drive, west of its intersection with County Home Road in the Aiden Township, consists of 13 lots, 11.99 acres, and the owners, Kenneth and Christie Smith. It's an overall view, and you can see there to the west, the Aiden ETJ. Closer view there, and you can see Dakota Creek Drive in the previous Section 2. It's an overall view of the plan. A few notes on the site, this is existing public right-of-way, previously a stub connection. And the new street proposed is running east to west there with a new stub connection. The mailbox unit is the previous turnout, is in the previous phase. There is floodway, floodway on part of the site, also 100-year flood boundary. Open spaces utilized in this area with access. The site is currently zoned RA, one new public street proposed, Dakota Creek Drive is existing, electricity provided by Greenwood Utilities Commission, water is provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. School districts are Aiden Elementary, Aiden Middle, Aiden Griffin High School. Conditions and requirements on this plan, just to label all road names and give it a public or private designation, no stormwater BMTs are required, show all, these all need designations for all adjacent parcels, revise the note requiring approval by Pitt County. Pitt County Emergency Management, all lots must be within 400 foot of a fire hydrant. Roads and cul-de-sacs must meet the requirements for fire service apparatus. Pitt County Environmental Health, all lots must meet all environmental health requirements. NCDOT approved this plan, Greenwood Utilities will require attempt at electrical easement along the backside of the right-of-way. This is the current condition of the site. Again, the current condition looking west from the cul-de-sac. And the previous phase and adjacent owners. Going to be from the cul-de-sac of Dakota Creek Drive, again, the previous phase. Adjacent property owners have been notified, and staff did receive an inquiry in regards to the proposed development. There's a call with a request for a copy of the plan and a copy of the plan for the previous phase. I didn't receive any feedback, just a request to review the plan. The Technical Review Committee has recommended conditional approval. At this time, any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board? And on this particular item, I do not have anyone that has signed up to speak for this matter, but I will, I guess, open that up for public comments, and as somebody steps up promptly, we'll close that session, okay? So now, comments or questions that you might have on this item? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion, what we'd like to do with this agenda
I move to approve it as recommended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Who was the second?
We'll go on.
Motion and a second to approve this recommendation. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by the right hand, and likewise for opposing. The motion carries. All right? Thank you, Jason. Jonas, you've been waiting for this time, haven't you?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to give you an update. If you remember back to last November, the board appointed a committee to get together to discuss some of the concerns with the subdivision ordinance and processes involved with that. Four of our board members here tonight served on that committee. We met with, along with two engineers, or, I'm sorry, two developers and one engineer as well that made up that committee. And today, we had our final meeting of that committee and have a recommendation that we would like to bring forward to you at your next meeting. We've held three meetings in February, March, and April. We discussed a lot of topics during those meetings, such as the sewers, septic systems, the approval process that's in place, as well as the adjacent property notifications that were sent out for the subdivisions. Had a lot of good discussions, and I think everyone, both from the planning board's side and the development side, got a lot of valuable information from that. So come to you tonight to tell you that we're ready to bring forth a recommendation to you from that committee, and asking that you set a public hearing for next month's meeting on May 17 at 5:30.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, to the board members that served on this committee, I do thank you for your input, and I think we did have a learning session, so I appreciate that. But at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion that we set a public hearing to be held on May 17 at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Got a motion from Mr. Austin, and I hear a second?
Yes.
Second from Mr. Brown. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising the right hand? All opposed, like sign? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have one, one question. Do we, how do we inform the board of the details?
Well, I was going to bring forth the recommendation prior to the public hearing next month. If you'd like to shed any light on it, being from that committee, I think it would be appropriate as well, or if you'd like me to.
Sure, if you, if you would be so kind to.
Yeah, so we had a lot of discussion. The committee is recommending that we no longer bring the subdivision plans to the planning board. That's not a general statute or state law that requires the planning board to approve subdivision plans. So what the committee recommended was that that be a staff function. The planning board will still be in charge of creating any amendment language to the ordinance, but staff would take care and handle the requirements, making sure that they are met, as outlined in that subdivision ordinance. And the Technical Review Committee, which you just heard from Jason, makes the recommendation to the planning board now, will, moving forward, if approved, will approve the plan before it gets to the planning board. I will tell you that the committee also recommended that we include, still include adjacent property owner notifications to make them aware and have them directed to contact staff if there are any concerns, and staff can follow up and address any concerns of the public, hopefully prior to going to the Technical Review Committee, and ensure that their questions are answered. Also, kind of a side note that I wasn't expecting, but the development community really found it beneficial to have this committee get together and discuss these issues, and they recommended, from a proactive approach, that the planning board meet with the development community on a more regular basis to hear concerns from the development community and vice versa from the planning board to the development community. So if that's the wish, we can look at setting up some of those meetings moving forward.
Basically, that would be a meeting that we'd have with them, with a liaison member from the board.
Right, with the liaison appointed committee getting back with them, is what was discussed.
Question. Does it satisfy the concern we had about the preliminary plaque? Remember, the planning board was saying that we come to the board before they, before they take care of it, so you guys are going to go away and work on that, about what you were doing before. So are you saying that you're going to take care of that now? We're going to have to worry about the preliminary plaque?
That's right.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're not going to see the subdivision anymore?
Right, and what we also talked about, and again, I'll have a more thorough presentation at your next month's meeting, but what we talked about was having some sort of report to you guys about the subdivisions that we've received and approved, so that you are aware and kept in the loop of the subdivisions activities that we've been a part of.
So basically, you're going to ask us to vote on something that we hadn't seen?
No, you will not be voting.
We won't vote on subdivisions?
No. And if it's approved by the Board of Commissioners to amend the ordinance, now the Technical Review Committee will approve the subdivision plan instead of making a recommendation for you guys to approve. And what that essentially does, it takes out any subjectivity that comes into play from the public at your meetings.
So what, if I may add a little bit? So what, if I may add a little bit, it has grown out of our frustration when a preliminary plat is presented to us and we disapprove it for whatever various reasons. We cannot, we're not permitted to disprove it in the sense that they can then bring suit against the county and then cause the county extra expense in defending. And we've experienced that in the last couple of years already with a couple of subdivisions, of
Because basically, our TRC is going to make sure too that we are meeting the criteria, and that's what we're sitting here making sure of right now. So as long as you keep us updated.
Mr. Chairman, my question still.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused. Because I was thinking that with the subdivision, the Planning Board, whatever decision they made, it didn't go to the Commissioners. Now you're saying it won't come to us at all and go straight to the Commissioners. Is that correct?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I was referring to with the Commissioners was the Commissioners would have to approve the amendment that the committee is bringing forward to allow the Technical Review Committee to make the approval versus the Planning Board approving it. So that will be the action that is required. But after, let's say, that process plays out, the amendment is made, moving forward, the Technical Review Committee would approve the plan itself. And the Planning Board would no longer have to approve, have the responsibility of approving the subdivision plans. And I'll go ahead and tell you a little bit. Jason has done a lot of research on this, and this seems to be the trend for local governments, not bringing these plans before the Planning Board, having it more of a staff function, just because the way the rules are written for subdivision, it's an administrative function. So as long as the developers or property owners are meeting the requirements of the ordinance, there is really no basis for disapproving because the zoning is in place to allow for residential development.
Okay. Again, Mr. Chairman, back to you. I would like to get this in writing and see it before, yeah, I'd like to see all this in writing because he's saying a lot of things and have said a lot of things. And I don't know. I'd just like to see it because I know what we asked, and I don't hear it being answered. I know what we requested the committee to go away and do. Now you're saying, but what we're going to do is take it all from you. And I don't know. So send it to me in writing and let me see it all. And then when we come to the next meeting, I'll be able to have a more intelligent discussion with you.
Right. And that's what we're asking for, was the public hearing to bring it back before you and explain the process. So we'll certainly do that.
And you will have advanced notification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Is it, is it the trend for developers to have a regular audience with staff or the Planning Board as they were requesting?
Well, what came up in our committee meeting was from the development community, they were trying to be proactive. I'll tell you, from a staff perspective, we had a lot of good discussion back and forth from the board with the development community. Again, it wasn't a large group. There were only seven members of this committee. So we were able to, everyone was able to learn a lot perspective-wise from this group. And I think the development community said that instead of being reactive and forming committees on the backside, if we could be proactive and have open discussions a few times a year of how things are going, any concerns, then they thought that would be beneficial. So that's just something that was brought up outside of kind of our purpose of that meeting. I think everyone enjoyed discussing these topics.
And I think it'll be beneficial for not only our developers, but us as laypeople, laypersons in seeing what we are, we aren't supposed to be doing and what we can be doing.
And I do want to also add, not to beat this to death tonight, but if we were to move forward with this recommendation, the Planning Board will still be involved with any amendments that are made, is made to the subdivision ordinance that establishes any requirements. So it's not like we're stripping all of your involvement with subdivision review from the board at all. It's just you guys would set the rules, staff would make sure those rules were applied to the development, and the Technical Review Committee would approve the plan, essentially so.
Okay. Any other questions for Jonas or comments? Thank you, Jonas, for your work on this project also. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. A few informational items, and some of these are, I think, fairly important for you to recognize. You've already heard a little bit of this in the rezoning request tonight, is that our envisioned Pitt County 2045 land use plan that you guys were the steering committee for was approved by the Commissioners back in March. So we're in that little transition phase now where the old one hasn't quite sunset, but will as of May 1st. So you've got to hear from both plans this time because by the time the Commissioners hear these rezoning requests, the new plan will be in effect. So just want to acknowledge Eric's good work in being the project manager, moving that forward. I think we've got a good, sound plan. You'll be seeing a lot of this map over the upcoming years. So this is a plan that I think will live and test, will be proven as a test of time as we move forward. So we've got two corridor plans that are incorporated just for Ms. Holdeman's knowledge anyway, two corridor plans that were blended into the countywide plan, that being the NC43 South Plan, as well as the Southwest Bypass Plan. So if you have questions about that, need more information about that, we'll be bringing it forward to you each time we have a rezoning request. But if you need additional information, please let us know. Lot of action. You know, your Planning Board meetings have been chock full of different items of late. So those rezoning, we've had a rezoning request for Phil Lewis was approved by the Commissioners last month. The two text amendments that came forward, one for the parking of large vehicles, that was approved, as well as our text amendment about underpinning and a few other items. The other ones, and this came back from the March meeting, Land and Forest Equity, that was the proposed store there adjacent to Bellefour Elementary School, that was disapproved by the Board of Commissioners. FNA Construction, that site just north, south of Bethel, resigned to commercial, was approved. And the Miss Marjorie Elks rezoning, which was a downzoning or reversion of a rezoning from previous times, was also approved. So a lot of action by the board on those items. One item outside of all the rezonings is something that is really exciting to us because we also deal with recreation planning. It's the recreation site plan for our office park north of the river. Remember, the Commissioners has, the board has authorized the construction of two community centers, gymnasiums, one at the Alsekin District Park, the other one at the Office Park north of the river. So just to give you an idea, we didn't, we really hadn't planned for any recreation facilities to be out at this site. But the more we looked at it, the more that we discussed it, it is the right location. This is showing the agricultural center and the existing parking area, as well as government circle out front, which is access road off Old River Road. So we're looking at, up front would be in this blue shield here, that would be the community center. And then some playground facilities, a large, open field, flexible field space for different outdoor sports, and restroom facilities, as well as an environmental education center and some other picnic shelters in that vicinity. There'd also be additional parking, of course, and a new loop road to go around the Ag Center to provide additional parking adjacent to the large field back here. And what we continually heard when we were out for our public meetings earlier this year, trails, walking trails. So we've got some existing trails out there. We're going to add to that. And we're also incorporating some of the improvements already on site, like the arboretum and some other features. And retaining as much of the trees as are on site as possible. So we're excited about this. If all goes well, this plan should be back before the Commissioners for their action in June. And we hope to be bidding this out for the construction of the community center sometime before the end of the calendar year. So we're excited about that. Brings a lot of good amenities north of the river. We've got some other items in your package tonight. Would welcome any questions, Mr. Chairman. That's all we have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Appreciate that. From the board, are there any closing comments? Right on the home front, right? Right. Well, let me just personally thank each one of you for your service to this board, to the county, and I thank to each other as we become not only folks that are working for the county, but I think I've gained some friends amongst all of our folks. I appreciate each one of you for your input. Molly, thank you for joining us and hope to see you all next go round. In the meantime, this meeting is adjourned.